To order, the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council City, that's the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and the Victorville Water District. And we have a closed session. As per motion to going to closed session.
Mayor Cabralis, yes, the closed session items are fully set forth on the agenda to pertaining to potential litigation, the other pertaining to real property negotiations, and the property is located immediately north of the airport. The parties are listed on the, actually, I'm sorry, it's existing litigation, but it's pertaining to real estate negotiations.
I will now reconvene the meetings on call to order, the meetings of the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Water District, and City Council of the City of Victorville. We'll now have the invocation, that'll be by Pastor Samuel Lee from Crossroads Cathedral of Praise Church, that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by our Police Chief, Chief Reynolds.
Lord, thank you for this day, and thank you for our community and the country we're in, and God bless each and every one of us in here, touch each of our minds and hearts as we make decisions in your light, not our selfish sense. Lord's name, amen.
At this time, we have some presentations.
Tonight, we are again honoring and recognizing our military, servicemen and women who are serving overseas. We have three banners on display tonight, and we're going to be giving the families of these soldiers a certificate in recognition of what they're doing for our country. And then, these banners then will be flown on our life standards throughout the city, and when they return, then those banners come down and we present them to our soldiers. So, at this time, our first one is Jeffrey Olson, the family of Jeffrey Olson. Please come forward, please. The city salutes Jeffrey Olson, and thanks, thank you for serving our country.
I want to say that I'm really proud of my husband, and I can't wait for him to come home.
Thank you. Next, the city salutes Cory Aruda, and thanks him for serving our country, and with the family of Cory Aruda. Please come forward.
This is our son Gavin and our son Luke. I'm Tamara, and my husband's on his second deployment right now. He's in Iraq now, and was in Afghanistan in 2006. And it takes him being gone for a year at a time for me to truly appreciate what an important part of our family he is, and how much I miss and love him. And also, being gone this long time, I think makes him really appreciate things back home too, and how great it is, and I know he can't wait to come home. I'm happy to say we expect him back home in a couple weeks, and I think Gavin wants to say something about his dad.
Our dad is the best dad we have, he's the best dad I have ever imagined, and I already miss him when he's gone, and I'm really happy that he's coming home soon.
Next, we have Sofia Vasquez Hernandez, United States Army, of the family.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
This is Yasmin. I knew I would do this. Anyway, this is Yasmin, my granddaughter. It's, Sophia is her mom. Both of her parents are deployed. Okay, anyway, both of her parents are deployed in Iraq right now, and so I have the task of babysitting the car, the dog, and my granddaughter. Anyway, it's been, I've had her for six months now. This is 18, so it's quite a task having the two-year-old. And anyway, I thank the City Council for inviting us here tonight, and I just, I need to thank my mom. I'm such a crybaby.
You too.
Anyway, because without her doing the legwork, we wouldn't have these. She did it for both my daughter Sophia and for Jeff, who's getting tonight. Between the whole family, we've got six now in the military, that's between nieces and nephews, and sons-in-law, and two daughters, I have two daughters in the army. Like I said, we've got three now deployed, one in Afghanistan, two in Iraq, my daughter and my son-in-law are both in Iraq, of course, and then Jeffrey Olson, who's my nephew. And out of the six, five of them were raised here in the Victor Valley, so I'm really proud of my nieces and nephews and my kids. Can I see my paper? Because none of you should forget. It just, it makes me really proud to see the City of Victorville honoring our military this way. You can tell, I'm, I get extremely emotional over it, because I'm so proud of them. And I just want to say that on behalf of Yasmin, and myself, and the rest of our family, thank you.
Thank you. The City of Victorville recognizes its military active, but we also recognize their veterans. And tonight, I have a certificate of appreciation for Els Lodge 1877, and this is for the service that they provide on behalf of all veterans in the high desert. And I would like to have our Inland District Veterans Chair, Richard Satchel, please accept this on behalf of the lodge.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The Elks have a motto, "So long as there are veterans, the Medevile and Protective Order of Elks shall never forget them." And in this respect, we hold dinners, we go to visitations at the Barstow Veterans Home, Melinda Hospital, and we recognize Veterans of the Year. I have two of them sitting up front, if the mayor doesn't mind, or are you going to present? All right. Master Sergeant Cleo Potter, I'm sorry, Chief Master Sergeant Cleo Potter. Hello.
What we have is a proclamation from the City of Victorville, and I'll read one part of this, where it says, "Cleo C. Potter devoted 30 years of her life serving her country by first enlisting in the United States Air Force in May of 1951, where she began her career as a clerk typist to the supply squadron at Parks Air Force Base, and later served at Lackland Air Force Base, where she was selected Ermun of the Year, Ermun of the Month, upper unit was promoted to Staff Sergeant in less than four years." So, for Cleo Potter, for 30 years of service, she was the Veteran of the Year, one of the Veteran of the Year for the Els Lodge, and congratulations, and please accept this on behalf of the City of Victorville. We also have another proclamation. This is for Craig Williams. He joined the United States Army and served two years active service, and 29 years of reserve time, and was deployed to Germany and Korea as the First Sergeant, earning seven Army Commendation Medals, two Army Achievement Medals, six Good Conduct Medals, and two National Defense Medals, and the Overseas Service Ribbon. Additionally, I think you're active duty again. So, he's back in the service on active duty, and congratulations, the city is very proud to have this proclamation for you and for your service. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
In our community, everybody, we have a lot of service organizations, but I'll tell you that I'm not sure that what the Elks is most proud of, but for my part at least, it's their support of the military, year in, year out. Almost every event that comes into the community, they are honoring our military at their facilities and elsewhere, so I compliment them greatly on that.
We now have the public comment section of our agenda, and I do have two, let's see, Norman Miller.
Mayor Cabralis, I also like just to report at a closed session that there was no reportable action, we concluded the closed session prior to this meeting.
Norman Miller?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I have a lot I'd like to say, but I only have three minutes, so I'm going to try to put it all into one, one statement here. And from what I've seen that the city has done in the past, and what it looks like they want to do in the future, my suggestion to the City Council would be to declare bankruptcy, and the sooner the better. Thank you.
Dorothy Miller?
Dorothy Miller, I do have a little bit more to say. My problem is, this council has set up here and has not done anything for the people, actually. All they worry about is their airport, their airport, their airport, and bringing the China people over here. Why? Don't we have enough people here to take care of now? We can't even take care of them. And people are just trying to sit up there and fill their pockets with that airbase, and it needs to go away. This city needs to be taken care of. Look at our roads. Look at, look at Hesperia. Look at Apple Valley. People go shopping there. Now, even the Chamber of Commerce is going to take and pay people to buy locally in Victorville. Now, who's going to do this? You guys have lost this city. As far as I'm concerned, it's gone. Until you get rid of that airbase and take care of the people, it's done. It's done. You need to file bankruptcy, you need to do it now. You need to get this thing taken care of in the right direction, and I hope and pray when we come up for election, that certain people that has sat here and sucked this city dry is gone. Thank you. One more thing. You notice how many people show up anymore? Why? Because they don't get answers, they don't get nothing from this City Council. Thank you.
We'll now go into the Library Board of Trustees agenda. There are no revisions. Next is our Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, and also our Airport Authority, and Mr. Caldwell is the chair.
Thank you, Mayor Cabralis. I'm not aware of any revisions, I'm not aware of any add-ons, unless there are some I'm unaware of, there are no other items of business for either the Rail Authority or the Airport Authority.
We now have the redevelopment, Redevelopment Agency agenda, and we have no revisions, we have the consent calendar.
Chairman Cabralis, I believe that we have a request to speak on item number three on the RDA, Neighborhood Stabilization Program.
Matt Carroll.
The city is too much in the business of being in business for itself already. The city needs to quit taxing the taxpayers and quit spending money that isn't its to spend. Since I've moved to Victorville, the city has aggressively gone from producing power now to taking over our water district, and all it's done for the citizens of this town is raise our bills, raise our anxieties, and rob us of our money. You guys need to stop, and you need to stop now.
Item number four, is a request to authorize the execution of a loan agreement in the amount of $778,372.27 for the purpose of funding general professional services and general expenses of the Regional Center of Victorville Development, Inc. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Mayor Cabralis, I would like to ask our Economic Development Director to address several questions related to this. I must have received five different phone calls today, where apparently, the agenda seems to indicate that this is an additional expenditure of monies. That is not the way I read it, but I'd like clarification on that, and addressing that these monies are not going to inland, nor are we paying for inland to go abroad to try to seek investors for us. So, if you could address those questions.
Councilmember McCacken and the rest of the council, and mayor, your understanding is exactly...
Put your microphone in your, thank you.
Your understanding is, in fact, correct. The Regional Center program is well underway, fundraising activity is currently taking place. In fact, at one of our last board meetings, we actually, in fact, approved a loan agreement that actually facilitated the first deposit of funds which would be used by the Airport Authority to help balance its capital requirements for the wastewater treatment plant that's ultimately going to be serving Dr. Pepper Snapple. Maybe just as a reminder, it is a very mechanical program, definitely new to us, but there are three participating entities involved in this whole Regional Center activity. It first starts with the designation of a regional center, which is a geographic designation provided to a nonprofit organization, which is the Regional Center of Victorville Development, a nonprofit that was formed by this council and managed by members of the city. The second organization is a private entity, and that's the entity that we commonly reference as the inland entity. Inland is the owner of a company called Victorville Regional Center, it's a private entity, and they're principally responsible for the fundraising activities, including all the marketing and procurement of funds, to which then, upon successfully procuring all of the loans, is responsible for loaning money to the Airport Authority. All three separate entities. Currently, there's eight loans, I'm sorry, there's eight applications where we've actually got applicants signed with agreements. I did mention that one, one funding of $500,000 has been deposited, and it's actually been deposited to a city account. There are two currently going through the process of that eight that are working towards getting monies wired into the United States, which is not a very easy thing to do, especially when you're dealing with countries like China, and they have very strict banking laws, especially as it relates to transferring monies out of its country into a country like ours. And then, the remaining five are expected to get through the initial USCIS screening process, so they would also become funds that would be lent by the private entity to the Airport Authority. The private entity inland, Victorville Regional Center, it is currently undertaking two foreign trips, investment attraction trips, one this month, towards the end of this month, there's another one also in December. I do tell you that there are no city funds, no Airport Authority funds, no regional fund, regional center funds being spent on those trips. Those are trips that are being fully funded and financed out of the private entity, the inland group, and that's a part of their responsibility to the nonprofit that we all created to help facilitate our capital financing needs. With that, unless I missed any of your questions.
The loan agreement that we're approving tonight is not additional expenditure of funds, it's more in essence, a method by which the Redevelopment Agency can be paid back by the Regional Center for the monies that have been expended to date to create the Regional Center. Is that correct?
That is correct. This is really a housekeeping item, more than anything. There are two numbers that I've outlined very clearly in the staff write-up for you, and the first, the big number, the $638,000 number, that is money that's been expended to date over the course of at least the last year, probably just over a year now is how long the city's been involved in directly pursuing this effort on its own. And then, as the remaining $140,000 under this agreement, it actually serves as a line of credit that is available to the nonprofit to help satisfy its administrative needs. That amount is not an additional appropriation request before you today, in fact, that is an amount that's actually been programmed into the operating budget for the RDA. So, at the end of, the ultimate purpose for this before you is it does in fact serve as a mechanism for the RDA to recover not only monies that have been spent to date, but also monies that may be expended out of the RDA's operating budget over the course of the current fiscal year. Mechanically, how it would work is, at the end of this fiscal year, we would capitalize all of those costs as one loan, and that becomes the repayment obligation of the nonprofit organization. The nonprofit organization has the ability to repay that loan through the monies it collects in connection with all of the filing fees that are, that are charged against each individual investor applicant.
Questions?
Go ahead.
On this one, I'm very uncomfortable with this whole process. The $638,000, where did it come from?
That was funded from the Redevelopment Agency.
From the Redevelopment, okay. It was never approved by the City Council, was it?
There were, there were monies that were approved by the City Council, there were definitely appropriation requests that came before the council as well, the expenses were mostly professional services, legal services. There was a large amount, I do recall when first embarking upon this, to which the city manager at the time did exercise his privileges pursuant to the then-approved purchasing rules to actually get this program started. So, there is a large amount that's been exercised pursuant to city manager discretion.
Okay, no, it's them.
Keith, let me, let me, correct me if I'm wrong, let me see if I can back up a bit and identify the visa program portion of this EB5, setting aside the dollar amount for the moment. In the past, this country, every year gives thousands of visas, and there's a normal bureaucratic process that people would generally have had to have gone through to get those visas. And way in the past, it used to be if you had some sort of educational skills, or job skills, or something of that nature, these visas were given out. Well, they basically hand out some 10,000 or so. Now, they've pulled out about 3,000 that they would normally be doing, and they've defined and said, hey, there's another path to a visa, and it is, if you want to come in and invest a half a million dollars, and that half a million dollars can be quantified as 10 jobs or more, we will give you a visa. And it's a different path to a normal visa process than just simply handing them out because you want one for some particular reason. So, they've carved this block of visas out there that would have been given out anyway, and they've said, hey, we want you to invest in this country, and if you're going to put a half a million in, and the project and the half million can be quantified against 10 or more jobs, then we'll give you a visa. Next customer moves along, and there's a, there's a fixed amount of these. Is that basically what the visa program in itself is?
That's basically the visa program that we're following. That is correct, there's a privilege...
Everybody we access is going to create 10 or more, every customer that we come in EB5 is going to create at least 10 jobs or more, probably more.
Correct. Any other questions?
I have a question. I just want to follow up on Councilman Rothschild's comment. It has been stated inaccurately by multiple sources that somebody's buying citizenship for $500,000. My understanding of the program is that this does not in any way have anything to do with purchasing citizenship. It's simply an expedited process for getting a visa. Whether or not anybody would ever choose to try and become a citizen is independent of this process. This is the way I understand it, Mr. Messler.
That is correct. In fact, I'm not even sure I would necessarily characterize the $500,000 investment as buying a visa. There are an extensive amount of investigations that do exist. The investment in itself just allows the potential applicant the privilege to jump in front. It's a special program that allows these people to be processed with a preferred status. But even if they make the appropriate deposit and follow the program guidelines as we have it, it's not a guarantee that even they're going to get their visa. I mean, the visa that they do get, if they get through the process, the background, the legitimacy test with respect to where they generated the money, the visa comes with an extensive amount of conditions, conditions that have to be satisfied by the respective applicant. And if those conditions are not met, the visa can actually be pulled. So even in that regard, the visa could be withheld. It's not a guarantee. The visa could be a precursor if those individuals so choose to apply for citizenship. They can apply for it, but that's also a separate process.
Also, my understanding that any individual who chooses to experiment with the EB5 program has to be prepared to put themselves through a very, very rigorous background check by Homeland Security, by the Treasury Department, the FBI, and other agencies that are engaged in the internal security issues of the United States. And so you just don't get the visa. You still have to pass muster with all of the federal agencies that are responsible for the security of this nation. Is that correct?
That's correct. That is correct.
I have a couple of questions. This $140,000, do you anticipate that'll be your budget for, you know, for the future on a yearly basis, approximately?
No, actually, I'm not even expecting, in this current fiscal year, to exhaust what's being appropriated in this form of line of credit. I would, if I had to project today, I would expect that maybe half, and even that might be ambitious. And I say that in part because now, as we do have the individual applicants come in, each application that we take and process a loan for, that process starts generating revenues for the Regional Center that it could then use to defray some of its ongoing expenditures. Anything that's residual at the end of the day, then, the Regional Center, the nonprofit has the ability then to use, because it is a nonprofit, they can't show a profit on their books, they would take all the residual monies to then repay the debt owing to the RDA. The way it's structured right now, a lot of the staff time, if there are any real costs into the program, the staff, we utilize my office as the administrative service to keep the operation ongoing, but any hard costs that we incur, there are professional services costs, legal, financial advisory, accounting, things like that.
If one of these individuals that applied for the EB5 program went through the process, deposited his $500,000, and at the end of the process, his visa was, or his application was denied, we would still be responsible to pay back that $500 at the end of the five years?
The obligation to repay does not go away. You're correct. The obligation to repay, we would still be responsible for honoring the terms of the loan agreement, which would require that repayment to occur, correct, at the five-year maturity date?
Any other questions?
Yeah, one other. We're not approving the administrative support document yet until the city council meeting, right? This is separate, or are they...
That is correct.
Okay, because I have some comments about that document, but this is just the loan. Okay.
Any other questions? We do have Alan Shiskarstry, who wants to speak on this issue, this item.
Good evening. I'm Alan, and I want to talk about the EB5 program. As a matter of fact, I met already Keith and three clients. It's mine. It's already, I took him to Buck Jones, and they filed their application, and they have to go through three procedures, so they are on second procedure, and they're waiting for the fund from my country to coming over here. But the reason I came over here, since I'm on the television from my country, and a lot of people, they said, why we have to come into Victorville, when I showed them the scenery of this city, invest our money only at SCLA? Why not at the city of Victorville, like, come and, since you said there's a lot of unemployment is very high, can we come invest our money by shopping center, opening businesses, and then create the jobs rather than go only at SCLA? And they said, like, you go in Canada. They said, because Americans, they copy from Canada that program. And they said, there's a lot of Canadian, they said, come over here, invest your money anywhere you like it, as long as you create the job for our people. And a lot of them, they went over there, and they're very happy, and they got their citizenship as well. So that's why I came over here tonight, to see if there is any possible way so they can invest at that SCLA. Not only that, give the opportunity to a lot of people, as I said, I've had the people came from Vancouver to here, and they wanted to invest, buy raw land for a million dollars, and they wanted to build it. So I think they can create a lot of jobs for the construction worker. And right after that, they said, we'd like to open the factory, like, we have a pilot, you know, same factory in Vancouver. They want to do the same thing over here. So then I said, well, as soon as I read the paper, so I thought, I want to bring it up to you guys, so if you can consider that one as well. But I have a lot of people, as I said, they love to come over here, but most of them, they said, what kind of guarantee you're going to give me? How about if the city go broke? Then what's going to happen with my money? And I said, well, it's like anything else, you're gambling. And if they go broke, all they have to do, perhaps, my idea, perhaps they're going to issue the bonds then, you know, to give you guys money back. And the other thing is, Mr. Jones told us, just go on the air, said, you have to just put $50,000 upfront after you go to a security background check, and if you don't get the, I mean, through the immigration attorney, if they check their background, if, you know, they have some criminal background, whatever, at least they're going to lose $50,000, not half a million dollars. But, so as I said, I've got a lot of people, we already registered three people, and we have a lot of other clients, because we go all, you know, to Middle East, you know, and I'm going to bring Mr. Buck Jones even to our television show. He said, I'm willing to come. But my concern is, I can bring a lot of other investors, which I did in Vancouver, Canada, if not going to be only at SCLA, all over in Victorville area too, and to come and invest it, to create more jobs for a lot of Americans, like the other lady was saying, only you guys concentrating at SCLA. I think SCLA is not the only thing you have to consider. There is some other, you know, places, a lot of investors they like to invest. Thank you.
Thank you. I would suggest that Keith Messler, you got to introduce, get together and discuss that. I don't know the, all the parameters of the Regional Center, but within those parameters, maybe something can be done.
Yeah.
That's correct. I'd like to respond to that.
Well, I can answer that. I think the most direct good that it is going to do for us, I think, falls in line with how we're currently financing the wastewater treatment plant right now. As you know, the wastewater treatment plant is well under construction. It's being financed currently with internal equity, which means that's financed with cash. So the most immediate benefit we get, and if that project's costing $45 million in total, you know, clearly the 25 that we're raising right away is going to be, is going to allow us immediately to replace some of our equity with debt. And that's actually a good thing, especially at a time today when we need the cash available for other projects. The long-term financing plan is to take out this intermediate loan of five years with project financing of its own, of the sewer plant. When the sewer plant becomes operational, when it's sustainable, when the flows are going to the plant as expected, and the nice thing about this is we've got five years to do this. It's not going to take us five years to get that plant sustainable, but it gives you ample time to get it in a revenue-producing state where you have a net income, that's an amount left over after you've paid for expenses, to where you can use a net income to leverage against debt on its own, to which you have the, then, the plant operating on its own without any internal equity or intermediate debt from the EB5 program.
But I think, Keith, in addition to that, it's also an access to low-cost money. The EB5 interest rate is substantially less than any commercial rate that would be available to this city or any other municipality, which is one of the reasons that it is so attractive to cities. Is that correct?
That's correct. And just as a comparison, if we were to look at the traditional long-term taxable or even tax-exempt debt that we've issued in the past, it's cheaper than going that route as well.
Thank you. We have item number four. Your motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Before we leave that, I'd just like to respond to the gentleman that spoke. I'm familiar with the Vancouver success and several others, by the way, throughout the United States. And as just one member of the council, it's my hope that we're able to expand this program substantially beyond just the former George Air Force Base, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. There's a lot of rules and regulations in the EB5 program that have to be complied with, but as one member of the council, my vision is not restricted just to the base.
We next have the Victorville Water District Agenda. We don't have any revisions. We do have item number three. It's a request to approve amendment number two to their agreement with Concord Communications Group, Inc. for additional installations of PMI water meters in the amount of $73,460 and extend the term to June 30, 2010.
Move for approval.
Second.
I agree with him too on his comments about other investment areas. We'll be able to expand the EB5, I think, in the future. We've got four major, four project areas, but I think in the future, there will be other areas that will be added to the EB5 program. A certain amount of screening has to go back through the federal government, but yes, that's the way we ensure that all the loans get paid back. There's a revenue stream built into that.
Next, we have the city council agenda. There is a revision. Item number seven will be removed. And item number three is a public hearing. A public hearing called to hear arguments for or against a notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the SCLA reclaimed water line to elevated tank project. I will now open up the public hearing on item number three. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number three, please come to the podium. Hearing none. I will now close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Second. Third.
Next is the consent calendar. Item number four.
Move approval.
Second.
Item number five, it's a request to approve amendment number one to the existing Astrum Utility Service Provider Standard Agreement.
Move for approval.
Second.
Item number six, request to approve the contract between the city of Victorville and the San Bernardino County Flood Control District. This is for continued cooperation and future development of the Mojave Water Levee and Mojave Water River Walk.
A few years ago, I saw firsthand the benefits of that river walk down there in the river when there were some breaks further up the river, and the river walk area that was well positioned along there, there was no breaks in that high-water mark a number of years ago. I happened to be the mayor at that time, got riding a helicopter and saw that, and says, wow, if we had that river walk all the way up and down, there'd be no breaks on either side, it'd be an incredible thing. So not only does it add the recreational component to it, but for health and safety issues, it's incredible along that portion right there, from the narrows on. Just thought I'd share that with some of you. I move for approval.
Here, second.
Second.
Item number eight, it's a request to adopt resolution number 09087, resolution of the city council of the city of Victorville ordering the vacation of access rights away for Gate Road and portions of Gate Road and Appleton Street.
Move. Second.
Item number nine, it's a request to authorize the city manager to enter into an assignment of the city's lease for 15121 Pomodoro Road to Bertheake Waste Industries.
Approval. Second.
Item number 10, request to adopt resolution number 09097, resolution of the city council of the city of Victorville, State of California adopting the five-year capital project needs analysis for the I-15 La Mesa Road, Nescali Road interchange.
Move for approval.
Second.
Item number 11, it's a request to adopt resolution number 09098, resolution of the city council of the city of Victorville authorizing the submittal of an application to United States Department of Commerce Foreign Trade Zones Board in order for Foreign Trade Zone Number 243 to operate within the alternative site framework.
Approval.
Second.
Item number 12, request to authorize the execution of an administrative support services agreement for the purpose of performing the functions and duties of administering and maintaining the Victorville Regional Center. maintaining the Victorville Regional Center designation. That's item number 12. Mr. Cox, you wanted to speak on 12, but you already spoken number four, so it's the same information. Okay, very good.
I have some questions. Going over that document is quite a chore, but I don't have it in front of me, but I believe if memory serves me correctly, it was on page six, section number 12. I forget the title, but it basically designated the city manager by name, Jim Cox, and the economic director, Keith Messler, by name in the document in that section. And what I would prefer than to have their names is to have their titles in there, city manager or is design, well, no, not design, city manager or the economic director. If we were to change that, that's fine, we can do that too. It's just as easy as a name, but I'd rather have the title of the office that we have in the city right now in that document than to have a specific name in there. We vote on this and close the deal tonight. Tomorrow, one of them gets hit by a car or something like that, now we've got a name instead of a position built into that, whereas we could replace that quickly. And so for continuity and just clarity's sake, I would, at the moment, this is the first time we've gone to this document, I would prefer to see the document have the titles of city manager as opposed to Jim. You can have city manager parentheses, Jim Cox, or an economic director parentheses, Keith Messler, if you'd want, do something like that, but I want to have the positions in the document as opposed to the names in that section. And there might be another section I missed that alludes to that, but I think that was the only section.
Section 15 pertaining to designated representatives.
Yeah, that's the one.
That going to be your motion?
That would be my motion, yes. That amendment, otherwise, yeah, those changes unless the attorneys, I defer to-
That'd be appropriate. You can make a motion to approve the agreement subject to section 15 being revised to just have the position as opposed to the individual's names in there.
Sounds good. That's my motion. I make that motion.
There's a lot of things in this, in this document that I'm not happy with. I didn't approve the other item on the, and I can't approve this one. There's a lot of questions. We were supposed to have a workshop. We are going to have a workshop, but it seems to be after the fact, which is December 8th. So I'm not going to be able to approve this. This is, there's so many questions in here that just doesn't, makes the city a servant for this organization. We have to make sure that we have, well, that was just one of the things that Mike mentioned. We have to make sure that we have competent employees, we have to supply a place for them to work. We're paying for all this and it just, I don't see it. We're having a hard time as it is right now to keep the city afloat. And we're getting in the valve in something like this that really kind of bothers me. I just can't approve this. Until we have the workshop and an awful lot of questions that I have already written down at home answered, I think this is a wrong way to go. I really do. I don't understand why we have to have people telling us what projects we have to approve when it's no council member. And I'll be doggone if I'm going to be ripped up in the newspaper because somebody else made a decision and I didn't. If I make the decision and I make a wrong one, I'll take the blame. But this one right now, I cannot approve this document.
Item 13, request to authorize staff to determine and pay the appropriate license fees due at this time with Oracle Corporation People's Soft License and Compliance in an amount not to exceed $84,200.
Move approval.
Item number 14, presentation of reports from council members.
I'll start with Matt Capron.
Yes, Mayor Cabralis. The only thing that I would like to ask, and this goes to engineering as well as public works, is maybe for the council to get a, an update, a report on our capital improvement projects for the current fiscal year. I know we just completed Park Avenue, it does look great. And I know that we have Village and there's another road out there being funded through federal stimulus. It's also my understanding that Bear Valley Road from Cottonwood to Mariposa, we're going to look to rehab with concrete. I'd just like the whole council to get an update on that. I know you all share that with me because I'm in your faces about it all the time, but I think it's important for the whole council as well as the public to know that we are moving forward and that, and when those projects will be completed, because it's my understanding that those dollars have been appropriated to be spent this year on those projects. So I don't know if we need a workshop on that, maybe just a report at the next council meeting, something along those lines. That's all.
Yes, I attended the annual museum Route 66 festivities that they have had once a year down there at their museum site in Old Town. And again, it was an incredible turnout. There was 165 old cars there from all over Southern California and out of state as well. The only car that could have been there and wasn't was the city manager. He has two cars in his garage that could have been down there and at least one of them, so he's promised to think about that for next year and put one of those fine vehicles down there. But it was a great turnout. There's got to have been 500, 600 people there. And that's the day when there was at least three or four different activities going on. And so it was a nice middle-of-the-day type of activity with other things spilling off in the morning and the end of the day. So next year, trying to get down to Old Town. That museum is one of the heartbeats for our Old Town resurrection, puts a good theme down there. And I know as we continue to develop down there, we'll have a stronger role for the museum, but right at the moment, they're hanging on by their fingernails. And so any local participation is greatly appreciated. They get a lot of communications from all over the world, actually, in terms of mail and people stopping off of buses and other things of that nature. But that annual event is something that you ought to come down, at least take a look at, just like the spice of life was that weekend. So they kind of complement, you go from one to the other, see them both and make it a big day.
I have nothing.
I have nothing and meeting is adjourned.